There we go. Okay, it is six o'clock. We'll call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the San Benito County Planning Commission at 6:00 PM. Could you please read the rules and procedures for Zoom?
Yes, good evening. Michael Kelly with the protocols. The San Benito County Planning Commission welcomes your comments. Each individual speaker will be limited to a presentation total of three minutes. If participating on Zoom, select the Participants tab and click the Raise Hand icon. If you are using a phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Star nine to raise your hand. When your turn arrives, you will hear that you have been unmuted. At this time, state your first last name, first name and last name, and county in which you reside for the record. If participating in person in the chamber, please complete a speaker card identifying the item on which you wish to speak, provide to the clerk prior to the consideration of the item. When addressing the commission, please state your name and county in which you reside for the record. Please address the commission as a whole through the chair.
Thank you. Supervisor, supervisor, oops. Commissioner Julio Rodriguez, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Thank you. If we could please get a roll call?
Planning Commissioner Devon Pack, present.
Rodriguez, uh, Planning Commissioner Rodriguez, present.
Planning Commissioner Robert Rodriguez, present.
Commissioner Robert Scagliotti, present.
Chair Robert Gibson, present.
We're all accounted for. Are there any department announcements?
Uh, yes, Chair Gibson, commissioners, uh, I'm happy to announce that the River Park Concept Plan is to be presented to the Board of Supervisors next week, moving forward.
Fantastic. Any public comment? The San Benito County Planning Commission welcomes you to this meeting and encourages your participation. If you wish to speak on a matter which does not appear on tonight's agenda, you may do so now during the public comment period. Is there any public comment via Zoom?
No.
Any public comment in the chambers for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Consent agenda? Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Okay, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion, move forward the consent agenda?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, zero, five, zero. Thank you. Regular agenda, public hearing. Amendment MS eight eight nine dash nine zero, minor subdivision applicant David Brigantino, et al.
Good evening. Chair Gibson, commissioners, Robin Bolster Grant, Assistant Director for Planning and Building Services. I have a brief PowerPoint. This is a bit of a cleanup item. Uh, actually, uh, this is a proposal to amend a recorded parcel map and deleting a condition of approval that is no longer applicable. Uh, just to orient, uh, here's the vicinity map, uh, with the subject property in yellow in the center. You can see Hollister Hills to the southeast, San Juan Oaks, uh, golf course is to the northwest, and on this slide you can see better, San Gisto Reservoir, um, to the north. Uh, in December of nineteen ninety, uh, minor subdivision eight eight nine dash nine zero was approved and the map recorded, uh, dividing a approximately nine hundred and thirty-eight acre parcel into three buildable lots and one remainder lot. Uh, this, uh, subject property is in high fire hazard, and there was a condition of approval that allowed that remainder lot to be deemed a fourth buildable lot if secondary access was provided. Uh, fast forward to June of twenty eighteen, the property owner acquired an adjacent parcel that allowed access and an easement was granted to the county for use for that secondary fire access, and I'll show that in a second. Uh, September of twenty nineteen, the far- fire marshal confirmed that the access road was compliant with fire standards and that condition of approval. In April of twenty twenty, uh, the applicant submitted, uh, an amendment to redesignate that remainder as parcel four. Um, a condition of approval was added, uh, in twenty twenty, uh, condition twenty-one B that required further improvements to the secondary access road, including, um, widening it to twelve feet and providing an all-weather surface with turnouts at every four hundred feet. Um, the fire marshal subsequently, uh, reviewed the, uh, road and deemed it to be, um, acceptable as is without those additional improvements, which would be costly and again unnecessary. Our county engineer went out about a week ago and inspected the access road and determined that it was in compliance with county standards and did not need further improvements. So, uh, this is the original, uh, parcel map, and here's the remainder, uh, parcel one, parcel two, parcel three, and then San Juan Canyon Road is, uh, off to the west. And so the proposed map before you now redesignates this as parcel four, and this is the property here, if you can see that, that was acquired, allowing this access road, um, to be completed, and that has been offered to the county, um, uh, for fire access. Uh, staff therefore recommends, uh, that we hold a public hearing, make the findings included in the resolution in your packet, adopt the resolution to approve minor subdivision eight eight nine dash nine zero A, uh, a tentative parcel map, subject to the revised conditions and removing that condition twenty-one B, uh, that requires those improvements that are no longer needed. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant may be available to answer questions as well.
Okay. Did, did the applicant want to speak, or did we just go right into public comment? Ms. Hall?
Uh, Anne Hall, uh, San Antonio, M.C., and I'm here looking up questions. We're basically here available to answer questions if you have them, so.
Hi. I am here really to answer questions if you have them. I think that the, Robin did a good job of presenting the facts and, but we're here if you have questions.
Okay, thank you. Do commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Scagliotti?
The road, the access road you're talking about, is it paved or just rep?
It is not paved.
So in other words, in a, in a wintertime situation, if the house catches on fire, the road could be inaccessible?
The mic is on. Um, the, we drove it, and the, given the, the condition that it is in, it, everyone felt that it would be sufficient even in wintertime. It's a fairly hard, compact, it's still, it's a road that's been there for a while on a fairly high granite area. It's pretty compacted and solid.
Any other questions? Seeing none, public comment. Is there any public comment on Zoom?
Yes. If participating on Zoom, select the Participants tab and click the Raise Hand icon. If you are using a phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Charlie Bedola, you are being unmuted.
Hi, this is Chief Bedola, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm unable to see any of you guys on here. I'm, the only thing I show is the CMAP, and I was, wasn't unable, I was unable to see the PowerPoint. So nothing's showing on, on video right now for CMAP. It's just showing a CMAP picture, and that's all it is.
They'll work on the technical glitches.
Yeah, I was unable to see the PowerPoint and, um, could barely hear, was Ann inside the, the chambers?
Yes.
Could not even hear her on Zoom.
Thank you.
Just to let you guys know, thank you.
We appreciate it.
I'll be still there to, for later on, but we can't see anything.
Ten, four.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other public comment via Zoom?
No public comment.
No public, any public comment in the chambers? Seeing none, public comment is closed. What is the will of the commission?
Make a motion, we approve minor subdivision eight eight nine dash nine zero A, tentative map, parcel map, with, and with removing the condition twenty-one dot B.
I'll second that.
Okay, all, first and second, all in favors, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None? Motion carries, five, zero. Thank you. Item number six, home occupation and rural home enterprise ordinance amendments.
Hi, good evening. Uh, Ariel Goodspeed, planner with San Benito County, and, um, this evening we have brought back the home occupations and rural home enterprise, uh, ordinance amendments. So, um, currently the county allows home occupations and rural home enterprise. Um, this is basically just an, an opportunity to kind of fine-tune our existing regulations that allow some greater flexibility and allowing certain businesses to operate in non-commercial or industrial properties. So, again, the proposed changes are, uh, in part a response to the proliferation of, uh, commercial businesses operating on non-commercial industrial lands. Now, these changes aren't going to allow all businesses to be able to operate, but is going to provide a little bit more flexibility and to bring in, um, more of these businesses into compliance. And what, when we are able to do that, we are able to keep, uh, people employed within the county, um, and it will bring in some tax revenue, it will, um, it will also, um, help to, uh, relieve some of this tremendous economic pressure for those who are wanting to be able to do business, uh, within the unincorporated county. Um, as the commission is aware, we are very limited on our commercial and industrial, uh, zone sites. So, again, it would not be anything that would be a disturbance to the neighbors. If it is, then, uh, it would be something that would have to not be, um, allowed. Um, it has to be able to, uh, comply with the surrounding land uses. So, um, I am going to kind of go over our existing code. Some of this you heard back in May. I know there's going to be a lot of people here that weren't here in May, and so we just kind of want to, you know, go over what's existing so they really understand the minimal changes that we're kind of, um, proposing. Um, so home occupations, um, right now they're allowed in all residential, um, zones, they're limited directly within the residence, um, it, it's basically limited into scope to what a normal home looks like, um, and, uh, and it must be, you know, operated in resident by the resident. So, some of the things that are absolutely not allowed in our, our current home occupation is traffic beyond that, that's normal, uh, storing materials outdoors, noise, uh, or nuisance, uh, selling anything, vehicle repair, real estate, um, and even things like teaching more, uh, music to more than one student at a time. Um, so the main difference between a home occupation and a rural home enterprise is that, um, a rural home enterprise, because it is just a little bit broader in scope, um, it, it doesn't work to be in any residential home. Uh, it also is something that can operate out of an accessory structure. Um, it does, currently does not allow more than two non-residential employees. Um, there, there's a broader expanded list of uses within our current code, and, um, it's instead of just a home occupation where it's permitted, uh, it does require administrative use permit, uh, where we impose conditions, have discretionary review, um, and so some of the, similar to a home occupation, uh, you can't store materials outdoors, you can't create noise beyond, uh, the, the district, um, there are some limitations of, you know, can't open before eight, stay open after nine, can't, no hazardous materials can be stored, and again, it specifically lists you can't teach students, uh, more than one student at, at a time. a time. So just kind of to, you know, rehearse. So the zoning district home occupation is in any zone that allows a residence. Rural home enterprise is restricted to just the agricultural and the rural zoning districts. So home occupations, no employees, there's no minimum parcel size, no expanded list of uses, no administrative permit required. Rural home enterprise allows two employees currently. There is a required minimum parcel size of five acres. There's an expanded list of use businesses that are acceptable and it does require discretionary review. Again, home occupations, resident only, not allowing accessory structures, rural home enterprise in accessory structures. So just to recap the discussion that we had had here at planning commission back in May and some of the questions that staff had posed to the commissioners and received comment back was, one of the items was should we allow rural home enterprises to be operated by non-resident? The comments we got back from the commission was no. Should we allow rural home enterprise to allow more than two employees? After discussion, it had been decided five. Should rural home enterprises be open before 8:00 AM in May? It was decided that no would not be open before 8:00 AM. Should we remove the minimum five acre parcel size for rural home enterprise? The discussion that had been brought back was yes. And, and again, I, the discussion had been that it'd be removed because all activities would be enclosed in an accessory structure. You wouldn't be able, you wouldn't, with the ordinance, you're not allowed to generate noise that would disturb your surrounding neighbors. And so the minimum parcel size was deemed not necessary to be, we've able to take care of it through some of our development standards. And then should we simplify the list? So like you had seen, we had put in there more than one music student at a time. We had made these very specific things and instead we asked if we simplified, put it more to performance standards and kind of opened up maybe some additional business possibilities that we wouldn't necessarily think of, but that could fit into these requirements. So I want to bring up the, the code here on what this kind of is going to look like. So I, so again, home occupations are going to stay that it has to be in the home by, you know, run by the resident, occupant of the home. It's still allowed in any district that allows a residence, so no changes there. There's not going to be a permit required. But some of the regulations and how we, you know, changed it here, again, just reiterating, can't be in the accessory dwelling unit. No, no persons are not residents of the primary dwelling or accessory dwelling unit would be able to have a home occupation. It must be operated at a single location. No, it would not include employment of any person not a resident, generation of pedestrian vehicle or traffic, storage of materials or supplies outdoors, which is consistent with our current code, show windows or window displays, onsite advertisement, construction feature alteration that is not residential character, it can't look like a storefrontage, any operational characteristic that would be a disturbance to neighbors, sale of products, and of course, storage of toxic substances. And, and then we, we outlined a few, some prohibited home occupations on, on there just to, for understanding daycare centers. It's not a home daycare that's operated by the state. We, we, if it's under a certain number, we, it's not even something we're allowed review. It, it's just an allowed use. A daycare center is like a facility. So that's, that's just, just to make clear the difference of what that is. We did put up some signs, only one sign, one address operating. Now the rural home enterprise, so mostly with the home occupation, not, not much change except we really kind of limited, we didn't put, these are all the uses you, you can do. I mean, people are doing all sorts of work, work from home nowadays. So instead of specifying specific things, we just made sure that they're being consistent with the character of a residence. Rural home enterprise, so as we discussed, we took comments received and we put it in, into this reiteration. Again, it's still in ag and rural zones. It still is going to require administrative use permit. When we, when I go through the regulations, there's a few of them, some are very strict on the regulations. There's a few that if they exceed that regulation, then it would require a conditional use permit and it would be coming to you. Again, if there, if administrative use permits, notice to all neighbors. If we get comments back from neighbors that there's a concern that there might, might cause something that's not compatible, we're going to bring it to the commission. It, it's, and, and again, it's that these will be compatible and not to, not cause a nuisance to the neighborhood. So let's go through them. Again, it's still allowed in an accessory structure. It would be operated on no minimum parcel size and we bumped it up to they would be allowed five non-residents. Any, any number of onsite residents who may work as part of the rural home enterprise. We limited to one rural home enterprise at a single location. And that a rural home enterprise may be operated at the same time that one or more home occupations. You might have, you know, a wife that works remote inside the house and, you know, husband that's running a small operation in the accessory structure. So we didn't want to limit it that way. And, and that it should not include any of the following. So cannot exceed the five persons, generative pedestrian or vehicular traffic that would negatively impact surrounding properties, storage of materials or supplies outdoor. Again, everything should be enclosed into the accessory structure to, to keep it visually not lightful, window displays. And that any business not specifically prohibited may be operated as a home occupation as long as all these limitations are in place. We did prohibit the sale of vehicles by dealer. And, and I think that, that, again, you know, if they're not in compliance, then their, you know, then their rural home enterprise would be revoked. I, so this was kind of brought back. Again, nothing here has, you know, you want to make some modifications to this. And if there's any questions that I can help clarify, I'm happy to take those or open it up.
Okay. Well, first off, do the commissioners have any questions or concerns at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay. Then we'll open it up to public comment and see what the public has to say. Is there any public comment via Zoom?
There's no public comment via Zoom.
Any?
I did want to let you know, I put a letter, someone from the public did reach out and it's on your, on your desk, from Durden, someone who wants to be able to operate a rural home enterprise.
Yeah, I had a question about that one later. Ms. Salinas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my question is if you can ask Ms. Godspeed, because I cannot ask her myself directly, how does the cottage permit follow guidelines to this? And the other thing is I'm all about everybody trying to make a living and they can do their business. Although the only thing I have an issue with is those people that have and are doing cooking, anything to do with food in their homes, that you're not requiring any kind of a permit. And I think you, you know, everybody else has a business and if you've got a mom and pop and you've got somebody making cupcakes at home and then you have a bakery in town making cupcakes, they got to jump through all these hoops. So I really don't think that you're being fair, although I don't know what that means, right, to a business in the county that has to go through, that's, that's a brick and mortar, that has to go through all the hoops and, and everything to get the permits and go through the health department. And then you have someone who's competing with them and they're not having to go through that and the revenue that the county is not making because of course, I'm all about economic development. And if you're going to allow all these businesses, how is the county going to benefit? So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, one on Zoom. If we could go to Zoom, please.
The Zoom person with phone number ending in 1959, can you please state your complete name and county you reside in for the record? You are now unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Vince Temporino. I reside in Santa Clara County, but I own property in San Benito County. And I, one of the things that we've experienced in, in our rural neighborhood where our property exists is that there are people that are operating businesses that have significant impact on, you know, either traffic or noise or hours of operation and there's zero code enforcement. And so it's one thing to have ordinances with rules and issue use permits, but without the corresponding code enforcement, it's, it's kind of a moot point or ineffective to issue the permits because ultimately the conditions and the floodgates that it opens up with different types of businesses impacts each of the neighborhoods and primary reason that most people live in the country is because they want, you know, quiet and peaceful enjoyment.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Additional comment in the gallery? Do we have speaker cards?
Good afternoon.
Okay. Good afternoon.
My name is Walter Hapner. I live at 1371 Union Road. I've, I've lived there for about 27, 28 years now. We moved there from, from Morgan Hill because we wanted to get into the country and we've resided there and we thought about moving multiple times, but we enjoy living in the country. For the same reasons the previous caller, I looked through this new ordinance and had so many questions, so many disagreements, but as I continued to process over the paperwork, what I found was an acceptance. I understand it, I get it and I actually agree with it up to a certain point. Allowing businesses to operate until 9:00 PM at night, I think is unacceptable. In, in the residence where I live, I, I don't want any traffic, I don't want any business. I don't, I don't want a sheet rock business going up and down my roads near my house at nine o'clock at night. It's unacceptable. I do stuff on my patio and to be able to see that traffic, it's just, it's just not right. It's not what we signed up for 28 years ago. And the change, the, change the rules of the game today is just, just not right. The second piece is exactly what the caller talked about is code enforcement. We have current issues and have been working with the county since October of last year to do some code enforcement. What I got in return was do the code enforcement yourself. Go out and take some pictures, document when those pictures were taken and submit them. So as a group and a community, we decided not to do that. Invade somebody's privacy, take pictures, put my kids, my wife, our neighbors at risk for some kind of confrontation, which is not right. Nothing's happened. And so today with this new ordinance, you just open the door. Doesn't need a permit. And as things start to happen, I just wonder who's going to do the code enforcement because it hasn't been done in the last year, it hasn't been done anywhere. That's the only reason why you're changing this. So if there's any questions, those are the two I have.
Okay. Thank you. One more on Zoom? Okay. Whoop, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on please. Mr. Betancourt?
Guys are doing another ordinance and who's gonna, who's gonna, um... Man, mine went blank, but anyway, who's going to enforce all these rules? The only time you have a problem is when a neighbor complains about a noise or something of that nature and what is done about it? Nothing. And when I sat up there, we had neighbors complaining about crowing roosters and we made an ordinance at that time and the county got sued and we lost. So sometimes I, I don't know the answer. You don't have enough teeth in these issues, in my opinion, to, to do anything. That's my comment.
Thank you. Public comment on Zoom?
Stephanie Jorgel, please state your name and county you reside in for the record. You are now unmuted.
Hi, my name's Stephanie Jorgel and I live in San Benito County. I would like to echo some of what the other, other participants have said. I think there is a huge, I mean, the reason that we all live in the country or we moved to San Benito County is we love, you know, peaceful, quiet nature of living in the country. When you start allowing, as one of the prior speakers said, you know, a sheet rock or drywall company to start, you know, right down your rural residential road, sometimes it can be challenging. And we've been through a lot with kind of different situations in our neighborhood and, and yes, we've had similar experience, you know, 50 roosters crowing, you know, neighbor, you know, buy, you know, breeding and selling roosters online, you know, no, no code enforcement whatsoever. So I think that opening this up to one acre parcels or whatever it is, it seems, seems like it could be open up a lot of problems, especially if especially if we don't expand the number of people that can, you know, help residents that are having problems with nuisance neighbors. So that's all I have to say.
Seeing none, public comment is closed. Commissioners? Having heard the testimony, do you have any comments or questions, or what is...
I think we might want to consider modifying the time section on provision 25.29100G. There seems to be a lot of comment about the lateness, so possibly amending that to be 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, or 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, which are sort of more ordinary daily hours. As to the other major point of the commenters, well, the lack of code enforcement, that is sort of an administrative manpower, and in a sense, this is a simplification of the existing home occupation rules. We're going from a more complicated regimen of home occupation rules to a more streamlined and straightforward set of home occupation rules. So, the issue of, I mean, you know, there wasn't necessarily... Well, of course, it is a matter of agency priorities, but to just, I mean, I guess... The point that I'm trying to make is that this is actually more conducive to code enforcement by having a more straightforward, simple criterion that is easy for the public to understand.
Okay. Commissioner Scagliotti?
Yes, I think you should make the parcel size back up to five acres, nothing smaller than five acres.
I said we should go back up to five acre parcels, nothing smaller, because if you go into a smaller acreage size, you're going into a more residential type of area. And a five acre parcels thing, it's more open and less traffic for people that are in a small, one acre zone, who that's home is their castle. Even with a five acre parcel, it's the same way, but at least it's bigger, people are spaced out more. So that's, I would like to see that. Go back to five acres.
Okay. Commissioner Robert Rodriguez, do you have any?
I have a question. So with the home enterprise, noise is obviously going to be something where it's not allowed, correct? And minimizing traffic.
Right, so, um, so noise, that's why every, all activities have to be in a completely enclosed accessory structure, because being completely enclosed is going to help eliminate noise and create barriers. Of course, it also is going to depend on the type of business and activity, that if it's a type of activity that's going to generate a massive amount of noise, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't meet the requirement of the code. In addition, we also have some pretty strict noise ordinance regulations for even our ag zones, and so they would still be required to comply with our noise ordinance. So if they're not complying with their noise ordinance, again, they would be out of line of the rural home enterprise. And then as far as traffic, again, traffic is, you know, in, for the home occupation, it has to be the same as a residential district. And for rural home enterprise, that gets tied back to number of employees. Those that reside on site, they're not creating traffic because they're already there, so the, it's the number of employees coming in and out. So if there's five employees coming in, five employees going out, you're looking at five trips in the morning and five trips in the afternoon.
Okay. Commissioner Julio Rodriguez?
Just a question on the, the health department question. I believe the, we talked about home bakeries and stuff like that, and I recall this conversation and question last time, and they're still required to go through the health department to acquire a health permit to sell their baked goods, correct?
That is correct. So the cottage program is actually, there's state regulations on it, and as part of our comprehensive zoning code update, we're going to have in there, you know, that they're, you know, required to follow state guidelines. State guidelines can change and modify, and so that's, that's why we have it, that they're required to go through state. They are also required to get health permits through our environmental health department. So it, it's not something that was exactly specific to this. It will be mentioned if someone came into the day, we would, you know, provide them the state requirements, environmental health, and how to go through it and get licensed that way. So it wasn't specifically included in this, it is going to be part of our whole update. I could specifically put it into this, but it seemed like it was its separate own program.
Okay. Now, when it comes to fees, for example, because you had mentioned something about a conditional use permit that a possible business might have to apply, still apply for a conditional use permit?
So, yes, so there were, let me, if you don't mind me scrolling up here, let's just see. Okay, so, for example, we put in there, so like, let's say they wanted to have six non-residential employees. Well, they don't meet the rural home enterprise, but it could be permitted through a conditional use permit, and that they would need to come in through you. We have fees associated with what a conditional use permit is adopted, you know, through the county, so they would just be required to pay those fees. Rural home enterprises and the major permits are a less expensive fee than a conditional use permits. And then the, one of the, one of the other ones was, maybe they want to operate their business start at 7:00 AM instead of 8:00 AM. Then they would be required to go through a conditional use permit because they're outside of what we're permitting as operating hours. They'd be required to come to planning commission, and again, they would have to pay the fees that we designate for.
So it sounds like there's some flexibility in this, correct?
Yes, but we only put flexibility to specific items, because again, we have to keep with the character and with the neighborhood of uses. Now, this, of course, does not hit, there's, in ag zones, there is a huge list of conditional uses that they can do that is ag-related, and those still stand. So this is for accessory uses or accessory businesses to add.
Because this is kind of built off of Scagliotti, that, you know, maybe, maybe five is, because you had suggested five, and going back down to, no, it was one, going back up to five, correct? So, I mean, definitely open to maybe three, two and a half, something in there. And then, of course, having some flexibility, because some home enterprises are home, you know, they're not as impactful, like, for example, noise or vehicle miles traveled.
So our current ordinance is a five acre minimum, so we can just stick with our five acres, if that is the suggestion. You know, part of the conversation is trying to figure out what works and what modifications we should make.
And then the last note, I just want to say, it sounds like maybe reevaluating fees, permits, and making sure that we can get code enforcement, some boots on the ground.
Yeah, so generally, counties, every county is a little bit, or jurisdictions a little different. Some update their fees yearly, some update fees every few years. Last time our, we've had a full fee update was 2018, I believe. We are due, I believe that we should be starting a fee update soon, in the next year or so, and all of, all of the different fees will get addressed for what the current rate should be that are appropriate.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Hepner, did you have a comment?
Chair Gibson, I do have a follow-up question. I'm a little bit confused now. I understand the document for the rural enterprise, and what I just heard was, if I don't qualify for the rural enterprise, then I can apply for a conditional use permit, even though that that property is not zone commercial? Is, is, is that what I heard?
Yes and no. So there's certain, certain regulations that we put in there that we were going to maybe provide a little bit of flexibility to submit a conditional use permit and be able to come through the planning commission. Again, this is an open discussion, and if the commission and the general public think that that's not the best route to go, we, you know, we're here to bring the best ordinance possible forward. And so we'll, we can take back these comments and come back with a revised ordinance.
Well, that's, the nice thing about having flexibility, that if there's something that's outside of the scope, then there can be changes made on a one-off. It's not across the board. And that's, that's important to have, depending upon the location of the property.
Yeah, I just, I just think it's fair. You've gone down, gone through and listed all the, all the regulations or the constraints that you had to have to be able to apply for each one of those, but there's nothing in there that says, now what are the constraints to apply for a conditional use permit if I don't qualify for the rural enterprise? And currently today, what we do know is you can't get one of those permits unless that area is zone commercial. Our area around my community, where I'm at here in Hollis, is not zone commercial. And so code enforcement should be doing something about that, but they don't. But what I'm hearing now really disturbs me, disturbs me that you're going to even make it easier. You're not even going to require commercial. I don't even have to be a rural enterprise, and I can still get that conditional use permit. So I just don't think it's right.
Thank you. The, the letter that we received, is that a matter that will be coming before the commission in the near future, or what was the...
My understanding, Chair Gibson, is that, well, first of all, we did reach out to folks who had been involved in various complaints and code enforcement actions to let them know that this issue may impact them, and that they should, you know, tune in if, if they wanted to be heard. So I think that was in response to letting folks know that the ordinance amendments were up for discussion.
Is there a process by where such a business or any other business can be made to comply with the ordinances?
Anybody, sure, you know, well, depending. I mean, everything's fact-specific and site-specific. And I have not been to this particular site, but there are businesses who are operating outside the bounds, and, and so, you know, they have the option that anybody does if they're in violation. It's, you know, correct or try to get a permit for it. We make it clear, you know, based on what, what's written in the code now, you're out of compliance in these areas. Too many employees, noise, traffic, whatever it is. And again, they have the option of, you know, applying. We don't turn folks away if they want to apply. We strongly encourage them to modify their business to warrant a staff recommendation of approval. But they, that's, that's one way to deal with, with a violation situation.
Okay. Perhaps you could help the gentleman in the audience, he's been having issues for a while, and needs some assistance. Thank you. So there was a discussion of changing the time from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM? Is that something that the commission has a consensus on?
Well, I'll suggest an amendment to the resolution, that amendment to the ordinance, that amendment.
Oh, wait a minute, there's a discussion of perhaps making it 5:00 PM?
Yes, why should someone in a rural area like that get to go to 6:00 or 7:00 PM when somebody downtown closes at 5:00, has a business like that? It should be 8:00 to 5:00. The people are at home, why should they have to put up with someone doing business after they get home for their evening? It should be 5:00 o'clock. You've got to take care of the neighbor.
To help people be better neighbors, you're saying?
Yep. And I also have a comment. Can't we put some bite into this ordinance that stops these commercial guys going into non-commercial areas and doing this business? I mean, let's put some bite into this. If we're going to do this, put the bite into it. If you're in agriculture and you're doing an agricultural type thing, fine. If you're in a commercial area, which I don't think there's any five acre parcel where people live in a commercial area, but maybe, put some bite into it. Let's get some bite into this stuff. So this, like this gentleman right here says, you can't get nothing done, we'll do it this way. Put some bite into this stuff.
Okay. Assistant Director for Planning and Building?
So what I'm hearing is, is folks taking issue with allowing commercial business in non-commercial zone districts. We do that now, right? It's a matter of scale. That's, that's what the rural home enterprise allows currently, is to do limited commercial activity on ag, productive, and rangeland. So we're exploring whether we're capturing folks who might fit in without impacting neighbors in different situations, and giving more flexibility for those. So, but, but the idea that, that folks aren't allowed to do any commercial business in non-commercial zone districts, that's, I mean, that is on the books, and we've had that on the books for a while. So the conversation is about expanding. If you want to talk about code compliance, I certainly, certainly can talk about that. We're making changes in that front as well to streamline that process, but we're not, we're not oblivious to the issues and staffing that it takes, and due process can take a long time, and I know that's frustrating. So, believe me, we're working on it.
We get a lot of complaints about that, a lack of code enforcement.
I understand.
Thank you. So we're back to the timeframe. Is there any discussion about 5:00 PM?
Well, the reason I was suggesting 6:00 PM is because there are some businesses, such as banking, or, you know, wherein, you know, there, well, the question is whether to allow a certain degree of commercial activity, not within the late evening, but for people that are working on the 8:00 to 5:00 schedule. That's the reason I was suggesting 6:00, is, you know, stuff like, you know, hairdresser salons, that sort of stuff, you know, the errands that people are trying to achieve, you know, in the early evening after finishing a day, and that was the reason why I was suggesting a 6:00 PM.
That makes sense.
So 8:00 to 6:00, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM is acceptable?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, alright. I move to amend the resolution to modify Section 2529100G to read, "Businesses must operate between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM weekdays unless different hours and days of operations are approved through a conditional use permit." Is there a second?
I'll second.
And that was a motion to adopt the resolution with that amendment?
That was, well, so I guess that's the next thing, is there's a second amendment that we're considering, which is whether to have the resolution modified to have the five acre rule for rural businesses.
Okay, so you're making those two amendments then? So you're, you're making those two amendments then?
Um, okay, I thought, procedurally, isn't it, each amendment is a separate amendment?
No, we're adopting the resolution and then you amend the amendment, or you amend the, the ordinance as part of the resolution.
All right. Well, I propose that we amended to have the five-acre parcel rule for rural home enterprises.
Okay. So there's a motion on the table to adopt Resolution 2021-Next, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the County of San Benito to modify the rural home enterprise and other home occupations ordinances with two amendments, one regarding time and one regarding the number of acres. Is there a second?
I will second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. As a code enforcement issue, you can work with staff and hopefully the Ms. Robin Bolster-Grant can help you. Thank you. Item number seven, PLN 210020, Felice Faria Major Use Permit.
Hi, Ariel Goodspeed, Still. So, yes, today we're gonna go through the Faria Use Permit. It's County File PLN 210020, 805 Orchard Road. So we'll talk about the location, project description, the site plan, land use consistency, the sequoet determination, the public comment that staff received, and staff's recommendation. So, uh, this is located, if you're looking at the west, you can see Patekow Highway. Off of Fairview Road is Orchard Road. You go up Orchard Road, the property is off to the right. I, I just wanted to really highlight the entrance to this property. The property is accessed by a 20-foot easement. On the right, I have turning movements for trucks coming in. And on the left is existing conditions. As you go down the entrance, when you first come to the property as highlighted, there's another 30-foot easement that enters a single parcel in the back. That is not where the entrance to this project is. That will not be used. That's for the primary purpose of the parcel that's located in the back. You continue on the 20-foot easement. You'll see the property is row crop. And then you turn to the main driveway of the entrance. So this project is kind of in tune of what we've been talking about this evening on rural home enterprises. So this does not fit in our current ordinance. It's, it's a little, it's a little bit outside of that scope. And so that's why it was brought to the Planning Commission to discuss. So it's a restricted scope of onsite operations to an accessory drywall business to the main purpose of the property, which is row crop farming. It's limited to only five employees. Vehicle storage, it'll include vehicle storage of five company trucks and five vehicles of the employees. The employees will come, pick up their work truck, their work assignment to the day, go out to the job site, and then between 7:00 to 8:00 AM. So again, it's a slightly modified timeframe than we've discussed earlier this evening. There's an existing barn and they wanna, that is used for agricultural activities. They wanna use a small, about 500-square-foot portion of that barn. And I'll, I have some additional slides and to show that. That would be just for tools and such related to the business. Their main residence, resident of, the owner of the drywall business, and he has a home office, and I'll show images of that. And it's just used for personal use. So he would use the existing office to also do things related to the business. The office would only be used by the resident that lives in the house, not by any employees. There is, you know, restrooms. The restrooms are for the resident. There are restrooms located at the job site, but if perhaps someone who's picking up the truck in the morning really needs to use the restroom and can't get to the job site, it would be on a as-needed basis, but not as primarily used for employees. So to give some details, as you're coming in on that 20-foot easement, and just, just to really highlight, this, that's transecting the west part of the parcel is that 30-foot easement all the way to the west. And so you're gonna, it's not using that at all. You're gonna, like I showed in the pictures, you're coming down to like the middle of the property, going up an existing drive, and the, you'll pass the residence on the right. Currently, that 20-foot access in the main drive up to about the residence has AB. And then it, from the residence to the back of the property where there's an existing barn and shed, it is all dirt. And so some of improvements as part of this would be AB continuing on for the road and through the parking pad, which I'll, I'll zoom into that. And there would be a concrete slab where the work trucks would be parked. So I'll, I'll zoom into that. So this is images from, if you're looking from the middle of the parcel, the dirt road that leads out to the barn. And again, those, that's the existing barn and structure. As you can see, this parcel is actively farmed. All of that farm equipment is staying, that use is staying, none of that is changing. They're just trying to use the accessory barn and accessory use to the main purpose of this ag. So here's a close-up of that parking and storage portion. So you're not gonna have 10 vehicles here all, all at once. This is just trying to show the cir, the circulation. The five company trucks would be in between the pole barn and the existing shop. Employees would come in, park on either side of the existing shop, then get into the, their work truck and exit the property. And then if you also look, the, there's one corner of that existing shop that'll be for tool storage. No hazard materials will be stored, just almost of, all of deliveries and materials and things related to the drywall business, it's all delivered straight to the job site. So these are just accessory tools and not the main drywall deliveries. This is a close-up of the existing residence. And as you can see, off of the garage, there's an existing office. It's, it's across from the laundry and a bathroom. That existing office would remain as is. The owner would just be using it for company-related purposes. So some of the ways you could find it consistent within the general plan, so the main purpose of ag districts is for farming. Again, this parcel is actively farmed. It will remain actively farmed, all of the equipment and everything related to actively farming will continue. This is a, an accessory use and it could fall under diversification, agricultural integrity and flexibility. So by allowing an accessory use brings in additional revenue for the resident to keep the agricultural operation going and support services. How it can be consistent with the zoning? So in AP zoning, you're actually allowed truck parking that is related to agricultural districts only, only. So, again, it's already being used for parking of the agricultural and farming operations that would continue to be parked, uh, used for that. The parking could be considered a similar use as determined by the Planning Commission. So it is your discretion tonight to determine that it is considered a similar use. And again, it is similar to aspects of the, our, our current home occupation and rural home enterprise. Operating the home office inside of the residence would fall, if there was no other activities going on, it would fall under the home occupation, wouldn't require a permit if he was working on his computer at home. The rural home enterprise, it is slightly outside of that. Everything is stored inside an existing structure. There's no new structure. And, and what, what's the, one of the main things is we have a slight time difference. The pickup of trucks is between 7:00 to 8:00 AM. So it's a little bit earlier than our rural home enterprise. And it's also having five employees. So as discussed tonight, one of the suggestions is to move it to be five employees that are non-residents, but it isn't currently. So these are some of the things to take into consideration as you deliberate tonight. We found an exempt from SEQUA, existing facilities, new construction. So it's, there wasn't actually any new construction going on, but you're using a barn for a conversion of use and minor alterations to land. So again, with the increase of five trucks coming in in the morning, so that's five trucks in and five trucks out between 7:00 and 8:00, and five trucks in, five cars out between 3:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon. We're adding additional base rock and a concrete plat, which falls under minor alterations to land exemption. So we had one, we received a comment from one resident, but there was a multitude of comments and concerns. One was compatible use. We communicated, you know, that tonight we'd be making a determination on that through the Planning Commission. There was also concerns about a deferred road agreement and roadway easements. So that 30-foot easement that goes to the parcel in the back, there had been a misunderstanding that that might be what's being used to enter and exit. It's not, it's off. As part of the parcel map subdivision that occurred decades ago, they had said that upon further subdivision, it would require additional improvements. This is in a subdivision, and so improvements are related to the use that's being proposed. And so it didn't trigger that particular deferred road agreement, and it's not using that particular roadway easement. We did have our county engineer review all the, all of those documents to make sure that we were in compliance with, with that. There was a, a comment made on a number of employees. They provided something saying that that TFK Drywall has 40 employees. We assured them this is for five employees. Now, if anyone uses, has more than the, if, if the applicant was to have more than five employees at the location, then we would revoke the permit. It would not be outside the bounds and it would call for, so, and, and I, I couldn't verify that, you know, what, what's being requested and what we're permitting is five, nothing more. There was also some concern about stormwater runoff. Additional improvements was a swale along the, the additional roadway improvements. It's actually a better improvement than what's out there, which is the dirt, you know, dirt road. So it's gonna capture more. I do also wanna highlight, this is not in a floodplain. And, and that on an extreme weather condition, if there was additional runoff, there's runoff, it would go down to the 20-foot easement and off to a culvert at Orchard Road. There was some concern that 30-foot easement, the, some of, they provided some images of water runoff from the row crop farming onto that 30-foot easement. That, that's, that's outside of what this use permit is doing. This use permit is going to improve the runoff, but our county engineer is following up on, on that particular thing. It was, one of the things they're working on is that stormwater runoff has to be captured all on site. This is technically, that's technically on site. And it wasn't part of the road agreement necessarily, but they're working on what can be done to help improve it. But it is outside of this particular scope. So will be addressed, just not part of this. There was a few other items that were brought up, but it wasn't part of this proposal. It had to do with septic and water use and, and garbage. None of those are part of this proposal. The resident that's living there is gonna continue to live there. There's no increased use that is affecting and, so it, it wasn't, it wasn't something to specifically address. So we did our, we did our due diligence to go through each individual comment and worked on, some of those worked with our county engineer to make sure we were addressing them appropriately. And, you know, meeting the concerns that had come up. And I, I believe we addressed them all, except for some of the water from the agricultural runoff, which came in today, and our county engineer's still working on it.
Okay.
So staff recommends that you review the report, the attached resolution, the findings and conditions of approval, that you make the findings and the findings and conditions of approval, that you make the findings include in the resolution and you adopt the resolution, approve the use permit, PLN 210020, subject to the conditions of approval found in the resolution. I'm happy to take any questions. We also have the applicant's engineer on a drive here that can answer some technical questions that you may have. So, thank you.
Are there any questions for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Scagliotti?
Yes, I have two. Number one, what are you going to do about dust control on the road for the crops around the driveway he's going to be using at 10 to 20 trips a day? That's number one. Because of food safety and E. coli comes from the dust, it could get on those vegetables. That's number one. Number two, is the home occupied by the owner of the company?
Yes. Yes, the home is occupied by the owner of the company. And currently, it is mostly dirt road. The addition of the AB would help reduce that dust. I can also open it up to the engineer to add anything to that comment.
Thank you, Ariel. Commissioners, the dust control would be by the application of aggregate base as an all-weather surface that eliminates, you know, the fine particulate dust that would be associated with the dirt road that exists now. But, you know, allows it to actually settle in like an aggregate base road, like the shoulders along all the sides of your roads that have recently been constructed.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, just a question. So, I'm looking at it, they would be using Fairview Road, correct?
They'd be using Orchard Road. So, off of 156 is Fairview. As soon as you hit Fairview, on the left is Orchard. Let me go back really quick to this. So, Pacheco Pass and then Fairview and then up Orchard, maybe half a mile approximately, and on the right.
But they're still utilizing Fairview Road, correct? Like at some point, I'm confused.
Yes, there is a portion, yes.
That's my question. So, my concern is even though it's just for, it's just five additional car trips for those five additional employees, there's still going to be a left turn. There's still possibly five left turns the person will have to take, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's kind of a concern because there's no left turn pocket, correct? There is, okay, never mind.
But generally, traffic would be actually going out to the right to Pacheco Pass and going out that way for the most part. But, yes, there's.
Any other comments or concerns from the commission at this time? No? Okay, public comment. Could we open up public comment for the Zoom, Zoom first, please? We're going to go to Zoom first.
It's okay.
Okay. Okay.
Stephanie Jorgel, please state your name and county for the record. You are now unmuted.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Jorgel and live in San Benito County. I happen to be the owner of the parcel that's on the back there that has to share, shared roadway easements into the property. And I just want to give you guys kind of a perspective. It's the parking area that they're referencing is a half a mile off of the main road down, you know, AB roads that have traditionally, you know, we've been the only ones to maintain them. The AB is really not enough because the farmers, they've disced away most of our, you know, they've disced away about 10 feet to 20 feet of our 30-foot AB road. They've also installed a drainage pipe that cuts into our easement. And so, that's kind of, that was like part of our request to get that fixed if they're going to add this use because these trucks being added would cause the farmers to not be using those. I mean, the farmers will be driving their tractors right on those roads from the same barn. The other big issue I wanted to bring up is that the owner of that business does not live in this house, has never lived in the house. I have, I have lived in the property for almost 10 years. And the person that lives there is the son of Mary Ann Felice, who's the owner of the property. Tony Faria is the brother-in-law, does not live at the property. And so, whether he's moving in, I don't know. I know he has a beautiful house that he and Mary Ann and the daughter live in over, up in the Spring Grove area. So, they don't live there. The statement of 40 employees was something that was actually published in Benito Link that they were awarded a PPE loan for 40 employees. So, I feel bad if he's lost that many employees due to the COVID economy. But regardless, I just don't think it's an appropriate use. You've got seven residences now that are developed around. So, there's four residences on the way in. Some of those are agricultural, you know, and residential. But seven residences between the ones on the way in and our parcel has two. I, you know, I think it's an inappropriate use. But, and then the other thing is, you meant, I know the planner just mentioned this first. I'd heard of it, that there's a bathroom back by the barn. If you're talking about an outhouse, that's the only bathroom. I didn't see any other septic. So, yeah, they definitely would be using the residents in the house. From what I understood, that would be an office for the team. And, you know, if that's something you guys want to permit, it just seems kind of inappropriate to drop a drywall shop right in the middle of a half mile off of the main road down a dirt road. And how many, you know, I mean, these are work trucks. They're going to have to, you know, probably wash their cars and their work trucks every day from driving down that road next to the agricultural use where the tractors are, you know, are going by. So, that's, you know, those are, those are my concerns, I think.
Okay, thank you. Is there additional public comment on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Public comment in the gallery, Mr. Hepner?
30 years living here and I've only been up to this podium three times. So, I guess I'm bad 1,000. This situation is exactly our situation, just on the opposite ends of our community here. I did drive Orchard 805 here the other day. Orchard 805 from Fairview is about a mile and three-quarters to the very, very end. You get to the very end, there's some businesses that are already there. And I counted probably about 13 or 14 homes. My situation off of Union Road is a tenth of a mile and we have about the same number of homes. It's ironic that two businesses are exactly the same that are occupying our area versus what Tony is suggesting here. What I will say is that I totally respect what Tony has done here. He's actually done the due diligence of trying to get a permit versus our situation. But the real issue here is you missed showing the house that you drive by down that road that's on the right-hand side, which is my house in my situation. This one's a little bit further away, but it's still close. Five trucks, five trucks in, five trucks out, five trucks in, five trucks out. If I've got five employees, I can go out as many times as I want. Or if I've got 40 employees and it's only five at a time, how many employees can you have going in and going out all day long? And I can only have five employees out there. It's the traffic flow. It's the same problem that we have. You accept this, you set a precedence for my situation to where the permit is going to be just turned around and given. It's, they're so similar. But I'll echo exactly what the caller said. It's just, it's just not right. You've got so much traffic in an area where there's homes where they're on acres, five acres, 10 acres, and now you've put this business out there. We don't want it in our community for that very reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment in the chambers? Mr. Andred?
If it's acceptable to the commission, you know, I'd just like to clarify a few points. The neighbor that called, we can go straight to the restroom, is, there is no restroom other than the restroom at the house. And as Ariel explained, it is only there like in the case of an emergency when one of the employees who's picking up or dropping off their vehicle needs it. It's not going to be a common occurrence. The drainage issue that they mentioned with regard to agricultural runoff, you know, part of the use of this road and what we're proposing is we're going to ensure that that drainage issue is fixed so that it doesn't adversely affect what the proposed use is. So, I'm listening and I'm hearing that this comment came in today. And if it's something where a culvert needs to be repaired, a ditch needs to be realigned, even if it's something just to make sure that the agricultural runoff doesn't get in and impede, this applicant is going to fix it, not just for his own use, but also for, to the benefit of the neighbors. In regard to the number of employees that TFK may or may not have, is they're only asked for five. This is something where the business is kind of like in a transition state due to the COVID. And this is something that would allow the business to continue to keep these employees occupied and operating efficiently as a part of a business that's local here. And they don't, we're not, we're not asking for any more for them five right now because that's, that's all that we thought that this site warranted. There's other spots where they may be doing other things for their other employees. But this is what, the intent of asking ahead of time was so that the business owner could make the decision to actually outright purchase and move his residence there and operate this as the business transitions over time. So, it's not, it's not like he's, does not live there now. He needs this permit to pull the trigger and make the, make the changes necessary to do this. If you don't grant the permit, then he'll move on and do something different. And that land will be potentially lost from the family due to, you know, the agricultural that's available out there is not enough to support what it costs to have a residence out there. So, it's kind of an accessory use to supplement the farming operation, make it a viable both agricultural residence and business. Kind of the word, you know, it's an opportunity for, you know, some nexus of different uses to keep things rolling in a manner that's complimentary to the neighborhood. Certainly, it's not agriculture like they thought it would be 50 years ago when the zoning was written for agriculture. But it's something that as times change, we think is warranted and could be a benefit to the community overall.
Okay, thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Ms. Salinas?
That is really kind of them to say this applicant that in case of an emergency, they're going to allow someone to use the bathroom in the house. That's quite insulting because it reminds me of the South. What you need here is a whole rezoning. You're trying to say that this is ag and it's going to stay ag, but you got commercial. I am all about economic development, that this does not fall under the rural house enterprises. It just doesn't. It's in the wrong zone. If they want to, they want to do it, then you come to the commission. They need to come to the commission, get it rezoned, ask for variance, whatever it is. Bathrooms, if they are to allow them in there, labor laws require you have a bathroom and it must be ADA compliant. So, now we're talking about more work and more money for them. You're going about not having to go through CEQA because you're saying nothing is going to change and it's going to stay ag. It's not going to be ag, it's commercial. How much do those vehicles weigh? What kind of an impact is that going to do on the roads? What kind of economy is it going to be bringing in there so that can cover the impact of what it does on the roads? We know right now that Fairview Road is being worked on. That's a lot of money coming in to get those roads fixed. This business with five trucks is going to be an impact on the roads, but it's not going to pay for fixing the roads. Let's see. I guess that's it, I think I'm touching on my point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any additional public comment via Zoom or in the chambers? Okay. Did you have a clarification, Mr. Andred?
I don't want it to be a debate, so I appreciate you letting me speak. The actual business operation occurs off-site for this company. This is just storage of vehicles overnight. And I wanted to just make that clarification.
Thank you. Okay, we have one hand up on Zoom.
Zoom participant with the phone number ending in 1959?
Is it?
Please state your name and county for the.
Hi, this is Vince Temporino again. I spoke earlier and I share the concerns that Walt Hepner does and then also the neighbor who's nearest this project. You know, as an example, with the impact to that neighbor and the previous speaker that talked about the concerns and, you know, has any, have any studies been done as to the impact to the people who've invested in commercial properties so that people like the Sheet Rock Company should occupy those commercial zoning, the lost, you know, the lost revenue investors? Because we're, this type of project in a rural zone. And then this is, you know, a broader question as to the ordinance. But like as an example, if there's one neighbor with this project that obviously it's going to impact her enjoyment of her property and the reason that she moved to the country. If she objects to it, like shouldn't there be some specific quantification of the opposition? Otherwise, it's subjective approval for each of these, including this project. And if it gets approved, then, you know, property owner who's adjacent, their quality of life is significantly impacted as it would be, as we have an interest, as Mr. Hepner talked about in our particular area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment in the chambers? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Commissioner Scagliotti?
I have one more question. Are the, are the company owners going to move into the house and live there? Or are they going to stay where they are? And if that's the case, then it's completely out of compliance to begin with if they don't live there under the rules I read. Am I right or wrong?
You are correct.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thoughts, questions, concerns? Or is there action? Someone wants to propose?
So, I do have some thoughts. So, this is just parking trucks only. And he's willing to redo the whole road and make sure dust is in control and with Mr. Faria moving in there if this is approved?
Yes. In addition to using some storage of the existing barn and then office.
Do we have to set any additional conditions or is everything in this resolution?
Sorry, say, say again?
Will we need, are these in this resolution?
Yeah, so that's what was proposed and presented is including the resolution. If you wanted to modify it.
I don't know if we need to modify anymore, but, you know, I'm, I'm okay with as long as trucks, I understand everybody's concern. But I'm okay with as long as trucks are going to be parked there and there's not going to be operations as far as using, making noise and using machines. What's the difference if they're ag trucks being parked there? Slap a sign on there. You know, as long as these trucks are not, I don't, and I've seen his trucks out there before. They're not over 26,000 GBW. They're two-axle trucks. I don't know if they're all the two-axle trucks or if there's some are two-axle, some are pickup trucks. But I'm okay with as long as just the trucks and he's going to improve the roads, the drainage. I now make a motion that we approve. There's? Just quick question. Scagliotti said something about the dust abatement. That's in the resolution already, correct?
Yes, so we have county ordinance on dust requirements, stormwater runoff requirements. It's conditions in there. I'm actually, if you want, I can pull up the resolution if you want me to go through it.
Okay, no, as long as it's, there's something to cover our going forward.
Dust control measures?
Dust controls on actually every single.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
It's a standard condition.
Comment from Commissioner Scagliotti?
I have one more question. What are they going to put down on top of that dirt road to mitigate the dust? Mr. Andred said something, they were going to put a new covering on the road? What are they going to put? What kind of covering?
The term that Ariel was using and also the caller that called in was AB. That stands for aggregate base. It's a gravel, base rock road.
Like granite rock, like the gray granite rock? You're going to compact it? You're going to put it to specs?
Yes.
It's going to be all compacted, no chuck holes, nice and square?
Yes.
Okay. I will expect that.
So, part of the conditions is, you know, improvement plan that is reviewed by the county engineer and to make sure it's meeting all standards and requirements. So, it has, it's still. has, it still has to go through another review.
So there's a motion on the table? Is there a second?
All second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Do you want to do a roll call? Okay, roll call, please. No. Go, we'll go down.
Aye?
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, five zero, motion carries. Item number eight, PLN 200035 Garcia parcel map.
Hi, Still. Oriole Goodspeed, a planner with the county. I'm here to go through the minor subdivision parcel map of the Garcia residence at 470 Orchard Road. It's in the same, a similar area of the, where we were last, the last project we were just discussing. I'll go through the location, what's, what's proposed as part of this minor subdivision, the site plan, its consistency and secret determination, staff's recommendation. So again, this is actually closer to Fairview Road. So the parcel actually connects to Frontage Road, which is just off of Pacheco Highway on one side and Orchard on the other. It is currently a 17.66 acre parcel. It's going to be divided into three parcels. Two of the parcels will be five acres. One parcel would be 7.59 acres. The parcel one is going to include all the exist, the existing residents, secondary residents, the current barn and shed. That's all on this property already. And parcel two and three would be constructed to have a building site to permit a dwelling on each five acre parcel as allowed and have a septic system. It would also include improvements of an ingress egress, three foot easement off of Frontage. That would serve parcels two and three. So the, the two five acre parcels are going to be created on the west portion or the back portion of the parcel, however you want to look at it. Again, access would be off, so it's actually an unnamed access road that connects to Frontage. You come down Frontage, there's existing parcels and, and it would extend Frontage Road to serve those two additional parcels. So just some images to kind of show existing conditions. So the picture to the very left, that would be the extension of Frontage Road. Looking at, that's a, it's currently a dirt road there serving the parcel. There's some agricultural going on. And then the picture on the right is all the existing residences, which are actually off of Orchard. So not, and that was what we called parcel one. So nothing on parcel one is changing. It's just going to remain exactly as is. The two new parcels, there would be improvements done as described and could serve an additional two residences. And I, also through the change in state law, an accessory dwelling unit. So it is consistent. It's zoned ag and it's remaining as an ag destination that it, to support agricultural uses and also a residential as long as the building sites are five acre minimums. The zoning is AP, which requires five acre minimums. It's going to meet those requirements of the zoning designation. Just a little bit broader. It, it isn't a commercial agricultural property. It has already been broken up, being a 17 acre parcel. It's not under Williamson Act where it, it's serving as, preserving as large ag resources, but as it's put into our general plan, that there are other agricultural uses that can be done on five acres that besides commercial agriculture. There, there, and that's, you know, why we have it. It also is consistent with the surrounding land uses. So the parcel directly to the north that you pass as you come through Frontage is two five acre parcels and then approximately like a seven acre parcel. So then east, just over Pacheco Pass, most of those are all ag and they're all broken up as five acre parcels. Across to the east is a little bit larger ag property. I'm forgetting the exact acreage. South is, is a larger ag property, but south is actually has a general plan overlay of commercial. So it's ag, but there's also been a designation of commercial to the south. So it could remain as ag, but property owner could do commercials south. Overall, it's, it's, it's consistent with the surrounding neighborhood of parcel size and use. We, we found it exempt for a multitude of reasons. Minor land divisions, if it's consistent with zoning and general plan, four parcels and less could be considered an exemption. In addition, this particular property did not have a lot of environmental concerns. It's, it's not a high fire hazard. It's not, there aren't species issues. There weren't, it was not a flood plain. There, there weren't, it, there's not, you know, we're not cutting down trees or, so it's not serving a lot of environmental concerns. The one thing is ag land, grade one soils. It's remaining as ag. It's consistent to be used still as ag, and so it's not coming out of ag use. The existing facilities, this is to parcel one, all the structures and as I showed in the images, those are to remain. New construction and conversion of small structures, so the two new residences on the five acre parcels, minor alterations to land, grading for the path, and, and then minor alteration land use limitations are for like encroachment permits, so additional road work. So this is the exemptions that the staff determined that applied to this particular parcel map of three parcels. Staff recommends that you review the staff report, review the attached resolution, includes the finding of conditions of approval, and that you adopt the resolution of the minor subdivision parcel map for PLN 200035, subject to the conditions of approval found in the resolution. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Any comments?
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez?
That Frontage Road, I noticed that they, it looks like they're going to be paving it?
Yes.
And it stops. So does that, what's going to happen with the lot or the parcel next door if they want to develop?
Um, the, the Frontage.
Will that continue on?
It, it's going to go to the beginning of part.
Lot three?
Yeah, lot 13.
Or I can't, it's, sorry, that's, the writing's tough to see on here. Oh, 13.
Yeah. And then if you look at the top, you can see that Frontage continues to that, to that parcel. It does end, there, there isn't full access. There, there's no road from the other property. So, so the Frontage Road is just to get to this parcel that's created. There is no through fare to connect to. And, and of course, as, as part of the resolution, has to be dedicated to the county, has to meet county standards. So, and that's all included in, in the resolution.
Okay. Any other commissioner comments, questions, concerns before we open it up to public comment? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on Zoom?
No Zoom public comment.
Is there any public comment in the chambers? Ms. Hall?
Hi, I'm Anvil. I'm here on the county ordinance and I feel Ariel's going to be job of three hundred. I think this is a fairly low impact subdivision, porch road, as is so making a purpose as a small extension.
Okay, thank you. Does the commission have any other questions, concerns, or is there a motion on the table?
A motion will be approved.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pack seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Item number nine, the long awaited discussion. Before we go to nine, I, for, for transparency purposes, for item number six, I had spoken with Supervisor Tiffany and Mr. Hepner before the meeting, Supervisor Tiffany via phone last night. For item number seven, several months ago, former supervisor Medina had called me and I spoke with Mr. Feria and Mr. Andred about the item. Thank you. Now if we can continue on to item number, whoop, one moment. Can we get a two minute recess? Feel free to stretch your legs for two minutes.[1404.65] Feel free to stretch your legs for two minutes. Public hearing to review and provide recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on proposed amendments to the San Benito County Code regarding commercial cannabis regulations.
Good evening again, Chair Gibson, Commissioners. I have a PowerPoint as you might expect. Okay, so last month, July 21st, we presented two sets of ordinance, ordinance amendments. One authorized the storefront retail, and the second was this more comprehensive package of revisions. Your Board, sorry, your Commission, adopted the resolution recommending that the Board adopt the ordinance changes to allow retail cannabis. That will be going, sort of briefed them last week, but that will be going for formal adoption by the Board next week on the 24th. On the second item, the Commission opted to continue with the more comprehensive changes to tonight's meeting with direction that we confer with law enforcement staff, and we have done that, and I will talk a little bit more about those conversations. During last week's Board meeting, the discussion came up about the, the more comprehensive amendments, and, and the Sheriff Taylor did attend that meeting, and we had a conversation as well as Fire Chief Charlie Bedola about their concerns with enforcement specific to the outdoor cannabis. And we'll go through all of the, the different elements of the package, but I just, I want to make very clear that this is not all or nothing, right? There are lots of changes that I think would speed up the process, would, would help us move folks through the system more quickly, and, and I, it's my hope that, that some or all of those changes can be adopted and accepted. If there is one or two items on that list, that, that there's still some, some concern over, we can discuss that, there are options, we can bring it back, we can talk about it more, but I just want to make very clear that this is, you know, à la carte, pick the things that, that make sense as we go through and discuss them. So again, the basis for this bigger set of, of changes, number of conditional use permit applications submitted to date remains at two, with no issued permits yet as of today. We are seeking, and have been encouraged to seek, economic development opportunities. Oh, please.
Can I interrupt you? How long has the cannabis ordinance been in effect, roughly?
Existing ordinance, oh my gosh.
Two?
Twenty nineteen.
Nineteen.
So two years and we have zero zilch to show for it, okay.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So clearly something's not working. We lack competitive advantage with surrounding jurisdictions, and, and again, we were looking for a streamlined process to see if there is incentive opportunities for growth without, of course, sacrificing the, the values that are important to our, our community and protecting our environment. So again, these comprehensive revisions include eliminating the evaluation process, this sort of pre-screening that happens, eliminating the limits on when you can submit an application. The second sort of category would remove what is in place right now that requires employee work permit provisions, and I'll talk a little bit more about each of these. Replace the existing variance requirements with an exception process when folks have basis for reducing required setbacks. We are proposing to add distribution as an allowed cannabis business in a couple of zone districts, eliminating the permit limits on non-cannabis, I'm sorry, non-retail cannabis businesses, allow cannabis businesses in portions of the airport safety district, and of course, we include a proposal to allow outdoor cultivation in areas where hemp is currently allowed outside of the hemp exclusion areas. The evaluation process, it's pretty straightforward. Right now, it requires all potential applicants to be interviewed, to be ranked, subject to a public hearing prior to ever submitting a use permit during these limited time slots. Again, we would propose to allow applicants to submit directly to the RMA for their conditional use permit at any time. The employee work permit requires cannabis employees to apply for this whole separate permit that is renewed annually, requires things like age verification, legal authorization to work, a background check, and it has its own permit fee. The proposal would eliminate this process. It is, it is duplicative of, of laws that already exist. It is burdensome, it's not something that we impose on any other type of business. The variance requirement, currently you need a variance to reduce any of the setbacks. We would propose to, to exchange that and replace it with an exception process. This maintains we're not giving up anything in terms of public health and safety, but variance requirements are legally mandated. The findings rely on, on specific circumstances about physical characteristics, and it is often the case where you have technically, the way it's measured, a sensitive receptor, a, you know, a school bus stop may be located within a thousand feet, but there's no chance that kids are going to go past or be exposed to the business. So since we can't make variance findings for situations like that, an exception process gives us a little bit more flexibility, but again, we're not sacrificing any of the, the reasons, the intent for those setbacks. Allowing distribution in districts where cannabis is allowed currently, the use chart does not allow distribution in AP, AR zone districts. We would like to change that and allow that so that folks that are growing or manufacturing or whatever in AP, AR, and AS to distribute their product, to take it from that site to another licensed site. Currently, there is a fifty permit cap or a limit on, on caps. We propose to remove that. If we have a giant flood of applications coming in, we can revisit that, but right now, two isn't anywhere close to fifty, so we kind of want to see where that goes. And again, if it's, if we're, we're, you know, people are beating down the door, we can, we can come back and look at that again. Again, the, the airport safety district, we talked about this a little bit, that right now, no cannabis businesses are allowed. We would propose to provide some discretion to allow cannabis businesses in certain portions of that AS district, and you can see here, and you probably already knows, we talked about this last time, but this, this is the AS district, and this distance between like the runway and the edge here is almost a mile. So there are areas, and you can see this extends past, past the highway, so there are some opportunities there. I think it's overly restrictive. And we are proposing to allow outdoor cultivation outside of the hemp exclusion zone, currently prohibited, and the proposal would allow it in compliance with the restrictions that are already in place and applied to industrial hemp cultivation. Again, we talked about this also last month, but the hemp exclusion zone that would be applied to outdoor cannabis requires a one-mile buffer from the cities, sphere of influence from CSAs, water district boundaries, trace pinos, any wine hospitality sites, and, and addition, additional buffers and screening from public roads. And again, this is what that hemp exclusion zone looks like at a distance, and then zoomed in primarily to, to the north. Just a quick comparison, because in my discussions with the Sheriff and, and to some extent with, with Charlie Bedola, the issues that they raised have to do with problems that they've had with our hemp cultivation sites. They've had thefts. Apparently, there's, I don't know, you don't get a lot of repeat business, but there are people that steal hemp and sell it as cannabis. Again, I don't think you're going to get anybody coming back to you after they figure out that they didn't buy what they, they thought they bought. But, so I have this, just, just to compare, hemp has no odor mitigation requirements. It smells exactly the same, so issues about odor would apply equally to hemp that is already out there and, and registered. Odor mitigation for outdoor cannabis is not a perfect science, but there are some things that folks can do. I've seen in Santa Cruz, they plant lavender or, or other sort of smellier plants, I guess, around the perimeter. Again, it's not perfect, but it's something, and, and it doesn't exist for hemp. Hemp does not require any secured fencing or access. It is, it is open. Outdoor cannabis has many, many requirements, including secured access fencing, twenty-four-seven security cameras. Hemp, there's no security guard requirement. Cannabis, yes. Hemp, there's very little inventory control. Cannabis, and, and much of this derives from the state regulations. The track and trace program puts a little ID tag on the little baby plants, and they are traced and all the way up to when they're sold or turned into cookies or whatever, and that, so there's shipping manifests that follow the progress of, of, of those products. Again, that doesn't exist with hemp, you don't necessarily know where the hemp came from or where it's going. And then the state inspections, and I'm, I, I could be wrong, I am not aware of any CDFI, that's the California Department of Food and Egg, where they come out to hemp sites, I've not heard of that or seen that. It's certainly not the case with outdoor cannabis, multiple inspections by three different state agencies in addition to our own inspections. Just because, again, the conversation with the Sheriff, and, and he, he agreed that you're right, that hemp is, is not secured or, or doesn't have these restrictions. So, so the conversation that we had was about how to include them if, if the, the powers that be decide that this is something that, that the county wants to see, the Sheriff would be a partner. They would get copies of the security plans, they would have to approve the security plans, and there are many, many other controls that we can put on there if, if, if it looks like we're going that direction. So this is just more generally significant restrictions currently in place on the, on the state level. Impacts due to odor, again, are no different than industrial hemp. All the setbacks that apply to all the other cannabis businesses would continue to apply to, to outdoor. It is a lower economic barrier to entry, which is one of the reasons that I think there is some interest in, in going this, this direction. Because you're not building structures or paving over anything, it does limit the conversion of prime ag, and there is a significant reduction in energy consumption from greenhouse grows, which are climate-controlled lights, the nutrient, all of that stuff is, is pretty energy-intensive, so. And then I just wanted to touch again on the, the existing state regulations and enforcement measures, so that it used to be on the state level that there were three different agencies that controlled retail versus cultivation versus manufacturing, hugely confusing and who's on first kind of a discussion, and so they have consolidated recently, this year, into one, and that, that is the Department of Cannabis Control, the, the DCC. They already engage in extensive background checks before you can get a state license. I mentioned the track and trace. There are enhanced enforcement efforts that I have seen and, and heard about in Santa Cruz. State Water Board has its own cannabis enforcement unit and comes out to check water. As an aside, we currently have incredibly onerous water regulation that requires one-to-one offsets for water use. So as much as you use, you have to account for that in, in capture, in some other method. That's going to be tough for a lot of folks to, to achieve. The CDFW, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, has its own law enforcement division devoted to cannabis, and they do go out and they do fly planes, and so we have some partners, again, whether it's indoor, whether it's manufacturing, or whether it is outdoor cultivation, we're not alone in enforcement, and, and again, I've, I've had the conversation with the Sheriff Taylor, I will continue to, if it is the, the will of the, the Commission and the Board to move forward with us, we'll be partners. He will be reviewing, or one of his staff will be reviewing these applications and, and approving the, the security plans. This is just some more of the existing submittal requirements, just trying to give you an idea of, of how much is required, and, and I've said it before, it is a highly, highly regulated industry. Pest management, waste management, landscape screaming, screening, horse screaming, I guess, preserving ag land, energy management and conservation. They do have to submit air quality management plan, addressing odor in some fashion, and then the security plan, again, routed to the Sheriff's Office for approval. It is Staff's recommendation that we hold a public hearing and receive comments on the proposed ordinance amendments, consider the amendments to the County Code regarding non-retail cannabis businesses, adopt the resolution recommending that the Board confirm the CEQA exemption, and adopt the proposed ordinance amendments. That is all I have. I know there will be comments and questions. Thank you.
Yes, before I, I wanted to address, I watched the video, or the live feed, I guess, from the last Board of Supervisors meeting where this subject was discussed, and there was a question at the end, I believe it was Sheriff Taylor that asked about revocation. Can you discuss the process to revoke a permit for somebody that's not following the rules?
Absolutely. The first call, and, and there's always some subjectivity, it depends on the rule and the violation. If somebody's screening fence falls down, I'm not going to take away their permit necessarily, unless it's happened fifteen times or maybe three times, that there is always some subjectivity in, in that. If anybody is, if they don't have their paperwork, if they don't have their shipping manifest showing where they got the, the plant starts, and where they shipped to, and when, and who the driver was of their delivery vehicle, if they don't have all of that paperwork, that becomes much more serious. My first call would probably, if it's a second or third offense, or it's a very serious offense, there are minors on the property, I would call the state and, and let them know that this license holder is in violation, because the state will, will suspend or revoke licenses, and they can't do business anywhere. They can't sell to anyone, they can't receive anything if they don't have an active license. Our process is, is pretty straightforward, it's, there, there's a hearing, but, or they can ask for a hearing, but revoking a permit, it, it's a, again, depends on the, the severity of the violation, but we're not going to give people a lot of chances if they are doing things that harm the environment, harm other people, expose minors to cannabis, or simply aren't following the rules. And I've, I've been around enough of these folks, I, I, I have a sense of, of who's, who's playing for real and who's not. It's a significant investment, so, you know, a lot of the problems that we've been seeing and, and hearing about are from folks that have not had to comply with any of this stuff, at least in this county. But, you know, that being said, if, if, if there's not enforcement, none of this works, absolutely.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns from the Commissioners?
Yes. I had a tele, in the interest of full transparency, I had a telephonic conversation with Anthony Bedola yesterday. I believe he is present and is going to be making comments, or can we get confirmation on whether Fire Marshal Bedola is still present online?
Yes.
Okay, and he has?
I'm online, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, this is Acting Fire Chief Bedola. Thank you for allowing me this time on there. I have a lot of notes, so just bear with me on this. First of all, I'm not for it and I'm not against it, I'm not going to say no and I'm not going to say yes, but I am going to present all the experience that we've had here in this county. You know, I've been well involved in the process from the beginning, from the city, city facilities and the county facility, so there has been some county facilities that have fallen through because they just haven't been zoned in the right area, and they started buying that. So the first thing we need to do, if we're going to do this, we need to get our cannabis affairs team in place, and...
Yes, in the conversation, you know, some significant points were raised, which is that, first of all, I mean cannabis is an unusual crop, and that is a crop that's designed and meant to be combustible, and we are in an extremely dry county in an extremely dry time of acute drought. Law enforcement has intelligence that there have been efforts by the cartels to, to infiltrate and to establish fronts in the legal cannabis industry, and as a point of example, Los Angeles County does not allow outdoor cultivation. That is both due to the fire risk and due to concerns in the law enforcement community about, well, basically opening up wildcat operations, that's to say, illegal fields that use the color of legal outdoor cultivation and rely upon the ignorance of the public to continue their wildcat operations in isolated parts of the Central Coast. And, you know, between the fire risk and also between the, the current and recurring phenomenon of water theft that is being experienced, you know, in Southern California, in the Central Valley, that's been reported in Humboldt County, and in regards to the concerns about organized crime, presence in organized crime, being able to send up front operations, a, we do not necessarily have the personnel either in our law enforcement or in our fire departments to be able to mitigate against the potential crime that could result from allowing outdoor cultivation. So there are great many risks with regards to permitting outdoor cultivation.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions, comments, or concerns, Commissioner Pack?
Well, I mean, there was talk earlier about us going over it à la carte, and there are certainly à la carte provisions. I, I do agree that the application period language is, is, you know, extremely bureaucratic and is, does not serve any legitimate purpose. Also, I would say, you know, during my conversation with Fire Marshal Bedola, he did mention that there is a purpose to having the cannabis employee work permit application, and that purpose is for law enforcement intelligence to be able to do background checks upon employees for the purpose of helping at both local, state, and federal level to gather intelligence. for the purpose of helping at both local, state, and federal level to gather intelligence and to kind of prevent and screen organized crime from, you know, operations. Yeah, so we might want to consider having some kind of cannabis employee work permit application. And I think that the application period, that can go, but I think we have to have a lot more stakeholder input and a lot more process before we can authorize outdoor cultivation. There's just too much in the way of fire risks, and there's too much in the way of potentials for criminal activity.
Okay. Did you have anything else at this time?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Julio Rodriguez, do you have any comments, questions, or concerns?
Yeah, I do recall us talking about the water, the amount of water that the crops require, and I believe Scagliotti said something that other crops require more, correct?
Yes.
So I believe that we've already addressed that, I just want to make sure.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez, none, Commissioner Scagliotti?
Yes, I have one concern about the outdoor grow, and since I'm a farmer in North County, and we have a lot of applicating pesticides, herbicides, and whatnot, if you have a cannabis field next to you, it restricts what we can do. So I think the outdoor grow should either be, can't really put it anywhere in this county, maybe we should just go to indoor grow only, meaning hoop houses and that type of stuff, because the drift of a Class 1 pesticide onto that cannabis, there'll be lawsuits flying everywhere, from everybody and everything, and you won't even be able to get the applicators to do the job within a mile and a half of them, because I have friends who farm in Monterey County, and they will not spray those fields if they're within a mile and a half of an open cannabis field. Done deal, won't touch it.
Sorry, just a quick point of clarification, that the hoop houses that we commonly see, those are technically outdoor, that's an outdoor grow. The indoor is sealed off, and is a greenhouse that is sealed, just to clarify definition.
Okay. Anything else right now? We're going to come back later. Okay, is there any public comment via Zoom?
Yeah. Charlie Bedolla, you are now unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, Charlie, again, you're Acting Fire Chief Bedolla, thank you. I wasn't finished, I had a whole list of stuff that I was going to cover, so for some reason I got muted, so I don't know what happened on that. But like I was saying, we need to make sure that we have the cannabis affairs team in In addition, we don't eliminate the second check for the backgrounds, because we've found numerous background checks that have gotten through the state, and we've found them through our local law enforcement, they've done a background checks, and they've got them out of the system, so they're not allowed to work in there. I do believe in removing the caps, because one facility could have numerous facilities on licenses, so that's okay on that part. I'm all for the dispensaries. I would say slow down on the outdoor until we get a team in place, keep it on the indoor. And as far as in the airport district, I do support that, because we do have some manufacturing facilities and growing facilities right next to the airport, so it's a good place to have them right there with that. Dealing with pre-applications, yeah. Like I said, in LA County, they don't allow, so there's a reason why LA County doesn't allow. And I've had applicants that come over from LA saying LA County doesn't allow, but we want to do it over here, and that was for an indoor. I do believe in the indoor, because it is a lot safer, and it is less secure. And as far as fines and conditions for the permits, we talked, you were asking about the track and trace, yeah, there isn't, there isn't minor infractions and major infractions. We have suspended a few licenses in conjunction with the state, so the state's found some, we find them a few numerous times, and then we've pulled a few places and actually shut them down. As far as the process goes, it's not us that's holding up the system, it's these facilities that come in, they think it's a free-for-all as soon as they get their, and they start to build, or they buy the property, and they think they can just do it. But when we have a good team and process, we're like, you got to go through the planning, you got to go through the building, you got to go through the security, you got to get through security prior to even starting your business. Once you get in security, then you can get through planning, building, fire, and law. Law's very important, you know, crime's going to go ahead and go up. Right now, you can't tell where facilities are right now, because there's no markets, and nobody knows, and there's the smell control on that. We've been through lessons learned, lessons learned through Santa Cruz County, and lessons learned through Monterey County. So we brought those policies and procedures here from them, so I know for a fact Monterey County's trying to play catch-up on the stuff that we're trying to, that we already have in place, that we learned from them, and they're having a hard time, because they went ahead and approved it really quick. So I just say, slow down a little bit, let's hold off on the outdoor right now, and keep the secondary background check in place. That's all I have to say on that.
Before we go to the public comment in the chambers, if we can go to Robin, have you had conversations with Sheriff Taylor about the background checks on the employees?
Yeah, it was the, it was the three of us when I met, it was with Chief Bedolla as well. And I think, I think the information about the missing, you know, information that the state background checks, I think that that came largely from Chief Bedolla, but I can certainly check if there's a discrepancy between what the state requires and what we would have run through our local sheriff, sheriff's office. We can certainly have them do live scan as well. It's not, it's not unusual to have the local jurisdiction, I mean, that's certainly, Santa Cruz County had their own as well. I'm fine with, you know, checking into that.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more public comment via Zoom?
No more.
No more? Okay, thank you. Public comment in the chambers, do we have any speaker cards?
They just raised their hand.
Back to Zoom, please.
Stephanie Jorgel, please state your complete name and county of, county of residence for the record. Thank you. You're unmuted.
Hi, my name's Stephanie Jorgel, I live in San Benito County. I am a small vineyard owner that, I live, you guys know where I live, because I spoke earlier, but I have, have been, had prior experience with an outdoor grow that was right next to me. For three years, I could not open my windows. One of the reasons we live in the country is so we can open the windows at night and get the fresh air and not have to use our air conditioning after the sun. Some cannabis lobbyists in the area back at the time said can carry two miles, so I actually would like to request that they increase, increase the distance to two miles from any kind of a wine establishment or business establishment, if you were to do outdoor. But I don't think outdoor is a good idea. The experience that I had was bullying by growers, bullying by the neighbors who had the growing operation, people stopping my guests on the way to the house and asking for their IDs, you know, just a really, really bad experience. We had a local nurse that got killed by her boyfriend, who was a grower, he shot her, and she died and bled out on the way to the hospital. This is not the kind of stuff that we want here in Hollister, it's been really nice since it stopped. And, you know, the smell is one thing, but the crime, the requirements on neighboring residences to add security cameras and lighting, and have to go through that emotional distress is just really not acceptable. I agree that it should be indoors in these tilt-ups, you can produce better cannabis, higher grade by doing it inside with hydroponics. The water use is high, it's six to 10 gallons a plant. I presently have a dry-farmed vineyard that uses, I mean, I've only watered three times all season, and I'm getting a harvest. So, you know, there's, there's a really great viticultural area here, there are people all through the Fairview Spring Grove area that are selling their grapes to Liall. I have my vineyard managed by Duckhorns Colera's management company. We have, you know, other vineyards in the area that are buying grapes, I have Eden Riff, that's, their vineyard manager has expressed interest in our grapes. So, you know, you're impacting so many of these residences, as well as small vineyards in the area, which is a really great business for hospitality in the area. And there's so many people who are now coming down here, and increased people that are coming down for tourism with the increase in local traffic. Really would hate to see the area turn into a stinky area like Humboldt, or one of these areas, you know...
There's additional public comment on Zoom? One more?
One more. Pedro Ibarra, please state your name and county you reside in for the record, you are now unmuted.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello, yes, my name is Pedro Ibarra, San Benito County of residence, and I am second-generation farmer. We grew strawberries, we actually grow strawberries, row crops, here in San Benito County. We have 200 acres, I have 25 northbound, just before crossing the Santa Clara County, into Santa Clara County on the right side. We actually, I've grown, and I'm currently growing hemp, and for two years now, here in San Benito County successfully. And it's, we are actually looking forward to growing outdoor cannabis. And it's actually safer to grow outdoor cannabis on the fire marshal side of things, because, you know, you're not indoors, there's no structure to burn, it's literally just outside. You're growing, let's say, celery or broccoli crop. So I would love to invite anyone that's, that would like to see an outdoor grow of hemp, and literally see how an outdoor cannabis is going to look like. And here again, I am second-generation farmer in Santa Cruz County, San Benito County, and Monterey County, and this year is really bad for broccoli and celery, and the only thing going good for us right now is the hemp business, so looking forward to growing the outdoor cannabis, because we own all of our equipment, it's actually easier for us to prep our soil. It's a very, it's a much less investment versus an indoor operation where you have outside investments, and, you know, people with deep pockets versus us farmers, that, you know, we own our tractors, our ripers, our discs, we could prep our own acreage with just literally paint, fuel, and a tractor driver. So for our, and I understand that everyone's concerns, however, which is why I would like to invite everyone to our crop and see how the future of outdoor cannabis is going to look like, and hopefully. So, thank you.
Any public comment in the chambers? Any speaker cards? A gentleman coming up.
Good evening, my name is Steve Becerra. Thank you. Still can't hear me? Well, I'll take my mask off, I try to go loud. So my name is Steve Becerra, I'm a local real estate broker, my job, my agents in my small office, to bring people who live in San Benito County, so they enjoy both home and dreams in the city, and rural areas in the county. I've also been involved with this issue in 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, both in the city and the county, trying to provide input for the ordinance, both the city and county have. So I'm not sure, I don't really have a problem with this distribution and manufacturing, if it's done to the state, to the state level like it's done in the city, we don't have any issues. We have a dispensary here, hasn't had any issues. The only thing is, real quickly about those two, the retail and manufacturing, is the city of Hollister hired four police officers, two firefighters, a cannabis director and a secretary, spent millions of dollars in salaries since they did this, and it's been a flop. They were promised $5.5 million, I was in the room when cannabis was said, $5.5 million in tax every year, hasn't happened. I don't know if you're going to have five dispensaries in the two zones we're talking about in the county, you know, you're going to have, the sheriff's going to have to have more staff, it costs this county a lot of money. Maybe it's going to work, maybe it won't. My real concern is with outdoor cannabis. I lived through illegal marijuana grows in this county, and dozens and dozens and dozens of people living in this county came in front of this board, not you guys, but the previous board, and the board supervisors, telling their story. We finally got rid of these illegal marijuana grows, including the one that Ms. Jorgel was talking about, where the nurses shot and dropped the hospital, and just got to die. People come to this county to live rurally, to enjoy the country, and nuisance-free, and crime-free, easy out by themselves. They don't come to have an odor that they can't afford to lose for years during the summer. They deserve some respect. We went indoor, the county agreed indoor growing, and that's where it should be, it's safe. Yes, it costs money, but we need these people to have it. And we should do it indoors, where it's safe and monitored, and not outdoors, the effects of quality of life of the people who come to this county. Ironically, we heard earlier another issue here about the same issue, with trucks and dust and dirt, no different. We owe them, the people who live in this county, we owe them the courtesy not to eject this kind of issue of crime and odor and all the things that it brings along, outdoor, I'm talking about outdoor cultivation.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Becerra. And for full transparency, we did have a conversation via telephone this morning with Mr. Becerra. Are there any other public comments in the chambers? Ms. Salinas?
I want to hear, so, how do you turn this thing on? Oh, that is off. It's not working. I don't want to yell. Oh, thank you. Where is my clock going?
Oh, can we restart the clock? Let's, let's cut it down to two minutes.
Yes, okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, that's really great of you. Okay, so Steve Becerra, you quite now know that there is black market cannabis growing in San Benito County today. Black market illegal cannabis has not stopped in this county. We've already gone through all the steps, going back to December of 2015 is when I started in this county and in the city of Hollister. You've gone through all the process, you've gone through all the steps, you went through all the public hearings with regards to hemp, and what you're doing now is just changing it from hemp to cannabis. Both the marshal, the fire marshal, the fire department, and San Benito County Sheriff's Department are on board with this. One of the things that Sheriff Taylor said is that he will be coming forward to the Board of Supervisors and asking them for money. I would, and I have mentioned to the board that I would like the board to commit no less than 80% of the tax revenue that's going to be coming to go directly to the sheriff's department. I'm sure other departments are going to want that money. That is correct, that Mr. Becerra said that money's having come into the city of Hollister. There are five operating cannabis companies right now in the city of Hollister. The other companies have not gone forward, because it literally costs millions and millions of dollars to purchase the property and to build out. Going with outdoor grow is going to save, and Mr. Ibarra, who spoke earlier, this is literally, it has happened. I advocated for local people, especially the people of color, and they're not operating in the city of Hollister. The people in the city of Hollister are out, all from outside the area. Mr. Ibarra would be a prime example of someone who could afford to go, to start with cannabis from day one, because it is outdoor. So I would advocate that you continue to do with the, with the outdoor cannabis. With regards to background checks, you have to submit a live scan to the state. With regards to background checks, you have to submit a live scan to the state. What happened when it came to the city is that they did a live scan as well, but there are police officers that were in charge, and it was more of a personality issue, because they were the ones who arrested people whose names they saw, and they decided that they were not going to allow them, and they have the final say-so. So the authority given to the local police department, the applicants are placed in a position where they don't fight back, because they are afraid that they will not get their applications permitted, or they would get their businesses closed. So I know that that would not happen through the San Benito County Sheriff's Department, because it's a completely different department, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, whether it's via Zoom or in the chambers? Public comment is closed. Back to the commission. Are there any commissioner comments, suggestions, or is there a motion on the table?
Well, I would like to make the additional comment, that I think opening up the airport zone, that's entirely acceptable. You know, my major objections or concerns are with regards to the outdoor cultivation.
Commissioner Scagliotti?
I have to agree with Ms. Commissioner Pack, outdoor is not going to, it's not going to work in certain parts of the county.
Well, that's why it's permitted, so there's the ability not to allow it, I would imagine.
I can't think of a really good spot right now in the county where it could be. In North County, you've got vegetables. South County, you've got issues with thieving, you know, not being able to be patrolled properly.
Okay. Commissioner Robert Rodriguez?
Mr. Scagliotti, I don't know where really outdoor, I'm more concerned with the odor. I don't have a problem with it, I just, I drift through Santa Cruz County, you can smell it, and that's just...
See the writing on the wall. Commissioner Julio Rodriguez?
My question is, it'd be conditional use if, for outdoor, remember what you were saying? So if we felt like there's just no way that it would work outdoor over here, but over here would work, that it'd be up to our discretion, is that...
If I can answer, every cannabis permit is a conditional use permit, so every business ends up coming before this body.
So if it's not in an appropriate location, it's easy to deny it. If it's out in the middle of nowhere, where the hogs might be offended, I think we could let the hogs be offended. I mean, there are appropriate places in this county. It's a rather large county with a, not a big population, we're being helped with the population issue by our neighbors to the north, but that's another subject. So I think that there are appropriate places where we could grow outdoor cannabis. There's no wine out in Pinot or other areas, so I think we need to be a little more open-minded about it and not let our personal preferences direct our actions, because we're here to represent the county and not our own personal issues. I mean, we could go on and go after alcohol, tobacco, sugary products that are sold on ice, I mean, there's a lot of issues that we could go after if we're letting our personal preferences let us operate, but we shouldn't be doing that. So if you don't like cannabis, you know, that's your personal problem, that's not what we're here for. We're here for the ordinance and what's best for the county as a whole.
Can I make a statement?
Absolutely.
I think that we should put it, we're zones in the county, like South County, we're on Pisens, where there's not a lot of people, but there's a lot of good water, you put it there. It's close to the sheriff to get there if he has to, it's not that far out, it's not like bitter water. Mr. Ibarra is a perfect place, I know exactly where he's at. There's nobody out there to smell it. My thing is, try and accommodate everyone if we can, but let's make money at the same time. Let's get some revenue for the community. So can you word it that way, where we can have zones or something like that? Or did I say that right?
Yeah.
Conditional use.
I mean, that's where the conditional use permit comes into play, then we pick and choose where we think things are appropriate. We don't have to grant them.
Yeah, they can come before us.
We can deny them. If it's not in the right place, you say no.
And we absolutely need to be making sure that there's a strong evaluation of fire risks, you know, and ensuring that any plans or conditional use permits really have to address, because we're talking about a crop, I mean cannabis is designed to ignite, you know, especially in storage capacities, you know.
I'm sure Chief...
It's not going to blow up in the field. It's a wet commodity until you harvest it, and then it goes to somewhere to be dried properly.
Chief Bedola's not shy.
It's not going to burn in the field. There's no way in God's green earth that it's going to burn in the field. It's green. When you cut it and harvest it and dry it, then you got that problem. And it does not use a lot of water, less than I use for lettuce.
Assistant Director.
We will route all of these applications through both the law enforcement and the fire marshal for review, comment, and for their sign up.
Okay. Thank you. There's a lot of fear out there that, God, if we change, what could happen? And that's kind of what's held our county, that's why our roads are crumbling, because we don't want any change. So I think we have to open our eyes and be a little more accepting of things that way out there, it's not going to be a detriment to society. So that's my two cents. I think there are appropriate places, and we can't just say no, because maybe it's not appropriate on Fairview or Fallon or anything else like that. There are places where it'll be okay. And the Planning Commission has the authority to direct where those places are. And I don't think we can codify it to have new swaths, or I guess we could create an overlay for cannabis, but it seems kind of unnecessary. Just my opinion. Any other comments from the commissioners? Is there a motion on the table?
I would move that we table this until further subsequent.
For what purpose?
For the RMA to kind of receive and incorporate our comments.
I don't think there's anything they could incorporate. Is there some specific change that you wanted to make?
Well...
That they could incorporate?
Well, as I said, you know, I have received concerns from the Acting Fire Chief as to a lack of stakeholder process in terms of the input, and of course, you know, there being a basis for the cannabis employee's permit, so...
Well, okay. I'll speak on that. We've had two public hearings at the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors will have another public hearing. If the sheriff is okay with not doing background checks at the county, I'll stick with the sheriff personally over the fire department. I think that's more their area of concern. Okay? Any other commissioner comments? Or is there a motion on the table?
I make a motion to adopt Agenda Item Number Nine, the...
Adopt Resolution 2021-Next regarding cannabis. Is that... Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Four, one. Motion carries. Thank you all for coming out. There are no discussion items. Commissioner comments were misplaced at the top of the agenda, they're supposed to be the last item before adjournment. Are there any commissioner comments?
I do have a commissioner comment. This will be my last Planning Commission meeting. I thank everybody for the opportunity. It was a pleasure, enjoyed it, and be working with you guys in the future. Thank you.
It was a pleasure working with you.
Yes. It's been a blast. Any other commissioner comments? Nope. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed? Motion carries, unanimous. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Motion, the meeting is adjourned.